Okay, if you are asking for a continuance, you can start lining up by the two council members, the council people here. If you are here for a case, listen carefully to the continuances to see if there, if your case is being continued. So they are going to announce the calendar number, they're going to announce the address, then council will explain why they need a continuance, and the chairman will determine whether they get that, and then we'll give a date. But that's the last notice, we're not going to send out any more notice. So, but you can always call us after the hearing. So again, listen carefully to the continuances. If you're asking for a continuance, you can also start lining up because we'll be starting shortly.
Uh-huh.
I have four in the morning, one's getting continued.
No, 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 I know once you're out, I'll just switch them. No, I appreciate your... I'm digging it.
Samantha Nunez, Samantha Nunez. I don't think she's here yet. Oh wait, ah, there she is, okay.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez, and I am the chairman of the ZBA. With me today are Commissioners Zurich Esposito to my left and Angela Brooks to my right. Before we begin, I wanted to say something at last month's hearing, but the small room we were in was not befitting of the occasion. I'm talking about what most of you already know, that Commissioner Sam Toya has resigned his position on our board. Sam was the ZBA Commissioner for longer than I honestly know, but I know his time spanned three different mayors. His knowledge of the seventy-seven communities in Chicago was unparalleled and kept the witnesses and the lawyers on their toes. Sam is not a lawyer by trade, but you wouldn't know it from some of the cross-examinations that he did of the lawyers here and some of the witnesses. More importantly, though, Sam always preached the importance of communication. He always wanted to see an applicant's outreach to neighbors, community groups, and alderpersons. That wisdom remains with this board. So to Sam Toya, who no doubt is watching the live stream, thank you for your many, many years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. You are a great Chicagoan. All right. All right, an announcement. Next month, at the conclusion of the June twenty twenty-four meeting, the ZBA will be releasing a draft of its new rules of procedure and application forms for public comment. We spent a long time working on these updates and are excited to share them with you. Following the release, there will be a twenty-eight-day public comment, period, for you to provide feedback on these new rules and forms. Be on the lookout for further information next month. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Brooks?
Present.
Commissioner Esposito?
Present.
I am present, quorum is established. The minutes of April's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now we will take continuances and withdrawals.
Does work?
Batteries are dying in that one.
Good morning.
Hi, it was.
Commissioners, my name is Akna Spleka. I'm an attorney with Law Office of Jaffa in Berlin LLC, and I'm here to ask for continuance. In the spirit of Commissioner Toya's ideals, we are still working with the community. We have a community meeting on those four cases. Page six, case number two oh six twenty-four Z, two oh seven twenty-four Z, two oh eight twenty-four Z, two oh nine twenty-four Z. So I am here to ask for continuance and to make your morning a little bit more bearable.
Okay. Okay. So calendar numbers two oh six twenty-four Z, two oh seven twenty-four Z, two oh eight twenty-four Z, and two oh nine twenty-four Z will be continued to July nineteen, twenty twenty-four, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the panel. I am here on page one, case number eight five two four A, address twenty-one thirty-three thirty-five. My name is Amy Kurson from the law firm Reyes Kurson. I'm here on behalf of Leah Moskoff requesting a continuance until September, please.
Okay, calendar number eighty-five twenty-four A will be continued to September twenty, twenty twenty-four, the 9:00 a.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jo Peña, city planner with the Department of Planning and Development, requesting a continuance for calendar number one ninety twenty-four S. It's currently scheduled for the morning session on page three. Staff are still working to review plans that are coming in. We request a continuance to the afternoon session.
Okay, this is calendar numbers one ninety twenty-four S and one ninety-one twenty-four S will be continued to the 2:00 p.m. call today, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman. Nick Fatikas on behalf of the applicant, GP Greenhouse LLC. It's case number one twenty-nine twenty-four A, the second case on page one. Oh, we are seeking a continuance. We're continuing to actually update some of our supporting exhibits and reports in support of the application or the appeal, I should say. We're looking for the, we only need a month, but I understand there may be a scheduling issue with the Commissioner.
Okay. Until August, okay. Okay, so calendar number one twenty-nine twenty-four A will be continued to August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the 9:00 a.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
And Chairman, on the last page of the agenda, which is a 2:00 p.m. case, so I'll re-present this this afternoon, but I just want to be mindful that the appeal, if we're successful on the appeal, we'd be able to proceed with a special use. If not, that special use would be rendered moot, it'd be dismissed. So I don't know if that plays into the August or September date, but it's something we can talk about this afternoon.
Yeah, we'll address that this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
And his new members of the board. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I am an attorney representing the applicant on item number two oh one twenty-four Z, page five. Also, in acknowledgement of our wonderful and esteemed former Commissioner Toya, as well as your ongoing policies, and too, in just consideration of the importance of a transparent and collaborative community process, we are going to seek a deferral. We do have, we went through two and a half years of community engagement on this and have multiple letters of support. However, it does appear that there was a couple of people who still have some concerns, residents in the neighborhood. So we'd like an opportunity to go ahead and engage with them.
Sure, this is two oh one twenty-four Z?
Yes, sir.
Okay. July, okay. Calendar number two oh one twenty-four Z will be continued to July nineteen, twenty twenty-four, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Mister Chairman and members of the board. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, and at the bottom of page three, case number one nine four twenty-four Z, we found another resolution, and I'm here to withdraw the case.
Okay. The calendar one ninety-four twenty-four Z is withdrawn. All right, any other continuances or withdrawals? Hearing none, we will call our first case. Victor? All right, while everyone is getting situated, let's have the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation read into the record. Jo, could you state your name and role, please?
Good. Good morning. My name is Jo Peña, city planner with the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, go ahead.
Thank you. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon barber shop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon barber shop is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. All right, would everyone that's planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. And thank you, Rang. You can put your hands down. All right, let's, who wants to testify first? Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thirty South Kilborn.
Could you do that again?
Nate Selgaiegos, fifty-five thirty South Kilborn.
Okay, could you spell your last name for the record, please?
G-A-L-L-E-G-O-S.
Okay, and what brings you here today?
Well, I'm applying so we could open up a barber shop.
Okay, and can you tell me about your experience in the barber shop business?
Oh, it's going to be my first barber shop. I'm currently in school learning so I could get my barber license. But I mean, I'm not going to be cutting in the shop for now until I get my license. I'm just trying to open it up so once I do get my license, I could work there.
Okay, all right, so you don't have your license yet? You're in school to get your barber license?
Yeah.
Okay, and when are you going to have that license, do you know?
By the end of this year.
Okay. And how many employees are you intending on having?
Ten.
Okay, and are you going to ensure that all of those employees will be licensed?
Yes.
Okay, and what are the hours you intend on keeping?
Ten to seven, Monday to Friday, eight a.m. to four p.m. Saturday.
Okay. And the gentleman in the blue shirt, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Francisco Gallegos, fifty-five Thorne South Archer.
And?
I mean, it's South Kilborn, I'm sorry.
Okay. And what is, do you have a role in the business as well?
Uh, property owner.
Oh, you're the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not going to be operating the barber shop, is that true?
No.
Okay, you're just in support of the applicant's application?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Case one eighty-two twenty-four S, today twenty North Broadway.
All right, Jo, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yes. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Rachel Dennis, fourteen thirty-one West Edgewater Avenue, six zero six six zero. My home.
Sure, go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So you're looking to open up a hair salon, correct?
Yep.
Can you tell us about your experience in the hair salon business?
I've been a hairstylist for twelve years and then been doing booth rental for like six, seven. So it's basically just a mini version of being a business owner. I just don't, I rent from somebody else.
Sure, and so now you're looking to open up your own business?
Yeah.
And not have to pay the rent, at least to that?
Still rent.
Yeah, it'd be rent to somebody else, I guess. But you're a licensed cosmetologist?
Yeah.
Okay, and how many, are you planning on having employees?
Just one, just a two-chair salon, pretty small.
And that person will be licensed as well?
Yep.
Okay, and the hours that you intend on keeping?
Noon to eight Wednesday through Friday, and then probably ten to six on Saturday. Closed Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. I see in your plan you have a retail area in your space. How do you plan to use that and what kind of products do you plan to sell?
That's going to be a vintage store.
Oh.
Yeah.
Two things.
Yeah, this would be the second vintage store slash salon in Chicago.
Oh, very cool.
Yeah.
Where's the other one?
The other one is in Logan, I think.
Okay, interesting.
Right, thank you.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one eighty-three twenty-four S, seventy-five seventy-four Northwestern.
Good morning. Jo, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yes. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Sir, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Tevo. The address is, you meant the address of the business?
That's fine.
Seventy-five seventy-four Northwestern Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So you're looking to open up a nail salon?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to open up a nail salon.
And can you tell us about your experience in the nail salon business?
Yeah, I've been licensed, nail licensed for more twenty years, and I own a couple nail salon, yeah. And this is the location that we're looking forward to open for the next one.
Could you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah, oh, sorry. So I own a couple nail salon in the area, in Chicago area, and this is a specific location that we're looking forward to expand our business to the next location, yeah. And I also license in cosmetology.
Oh, okay, great. So this is going to be your third?
Yeah, it's going to be my fourth.
Oh, fourth? Congratulations.
Thank you.
How many employees do you intend on having?
So as for this specific location, we intended to put around fifteen employee, yeah.
Great, and those will all be licensed nail techs?
Definitely, yeah.
And the hours that you intend on keeping?
For the hour is going to be from ten a.m. to seven p.m., yeah.
Is that every day, seven days a week?
Except Sunday, Sunday would be closer earlier, ten to six, yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. I just want to confirm, so this is an old bank, I believe? And there's the drive-through windows, so you will not be using those, correct?
Yes, we talked to landlord about it. We would like to remove the drive-through because, you know, we don't use it. But he said, you know, due to the cost, maybe sometime later if he can, because it doesn't affect the premise inside, so he'd probably remove it later. But we will never use that drive-through.
You don't have a drive-through nail service?
That will be innovation if we can, but yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Just out of curiosity, how does the size of this salon compare to your others?
This is small compared to our salon, yeah.
Impressive, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you all, yeah.
Next case, one eighty-four twenty-four S, sixty-two thirty-four North Broadway.
All right, Jo, do you want to go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Let me ask a question, are you going to be interpreting? Yes, okay, let's start with you first. Can you state your name and address, please? And speak into the mic and keep your voice up.
Alec Lamb and sixty-two thirty-four North Broadway.
In what language are you going to be translating?
Vietnamese.
Okay, do you, raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to accurately translate English to Vietnamese and Vietnamese to English in this proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
My name Dalina Tran, sixty-two thirty-four North Broadway, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six six zero.
Go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you're here to establish a nail salon?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us about your experience in the nail salon business? And if you want to speak in Vietnamese and have the gentleman here translate, you can do that.
I do nail twenty years already. I had a nail salon right now. The owner want to check the locations, bad, and it to reopen the new one.
So are you, are you moving locations? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Relocation, yes.
Okay, and so the business has been, has been ongoing for how long?
Before me and my husband, twenty-two years, my but we separate. I had bad eight years now.
Okay.
Yes.
And how many employees do you intend on having?
Only three.
Okay, and are you, are you a licensed nail tech?
Yes.
Okay, and everyone else who's going to be doing nails will be licensed?
No, everybody has license.
Has license already?
Yes.
Great, and what are the hours you intend on keeping?
Monday to Saturday, nine to seven thirty, and Sunday, eleven to five.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next case, one eighty-five twenty-four S, thirty-three fifty-two West Sixty-third Street.
All right, Jo, go ahead and read the department's recommendation.
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair and nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair and nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Are you going to be translating?
Yes.
All right, let me do you first. Could you first state your name and address, please?
Alfredo Guzman, seven fifty-one North Elizabeth, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four two.
Okay, and the language that you're going to be translating?
English to Spanish.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
One oh three Middle West Club, Oak Brook, Illinois, six oh five two three.
And your name?
Adolfo Vega.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, so you're looking to open up both a hair and a nail salon?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have any licenses that relate to either the licensed cosmetologist, esthetician, what license? licensed cosmetologist, esthetician, what licenses do you have? If you need to translate, please translate.
His partner, her partner has the, all the licensing. She already running a nail and hair salon on.
His partner has the licenses? What's your partner's name?
Maria Guadalupe Maciel. Maria Guadalupe Maciel.
Okay. And, and what licenses does she have?
De uñas, de pelo y de pedicure. He has the manicure, pedicure, and hair styling licenses.
Okay. Are you, are, are you the sole owner of the business?
It's the only one. Si.
Yes. Okay. So the, the partner that you just referenced is not actually, she does not actually own any part of the business, is that true?
No, a little. No, for now.
Okay. So I assume since you don't have any licenses, you are not going to be cutting any hair or doing any nails, is that true?
No.
So you're planning on having your, your partner to, to, is, is she going to be the one that's actually doing the hair and the nails?
Yes.
Are you planning on having employees?
Yes.
How many?
About twenty-five.
And of those twenty-five employees, how many of them are, do you plan on having them do hair, how many are going to do nails?
Around ten and ten.
Okay. And are you going to ensure that all of them are properly licensed?
Si, yes, I'm sorry.
And what are the hours you intend to keep?
Nine to six. Nine to six.
Every day?
Monday to Saturday, Sunday off.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? Before I, before I let you go, I, I just want to, I want to put on the record that your, your findings of fact, whoever prepared it did a very bad job. It, it is not done right. If you paid money for that, I feel sorry for you because it was not done correctly. And we actually have other applications. In fact, the next, the one right before you is an identical application, and the one right after you is an identical application done by whoever it is, it's the same person. And if, if that person received money for this, it's a shame because it was done very poorly, you could have done it better yourself. If you could just translate that. With that, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next case, one eighty-six twenty-four B fifty-five forty-six North Milwaukee.
This is the arcade. Okay. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Vladis Bestinkas, fifty-five forty-six North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, six oh six three zero.
Go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
All right. Thank you very much. And just for the record, I was mistaken, it wasn't, I was just saying these applications for the salons was before and after him, it was the two before the one that we just had. Because now we are on to a PPA, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this is for arcade games?
Correct.
And just explain to us what, what you're intending to do.
So it's a car racing simulators. Basically, with the three screens, you feel like you race the car. That's very good for community, racing community in Chicago, and it's the very first that I'm opening in Chicago area. I've been traveling all, all over the America and getting experience. It's, it's an amazing feeling to drive a racing car, real racing car.
So this is actually like a simulator, like to make you feel like you're like driving a real like NASCAR or something?
Correct.
In, what are the, what's the hours that you intend to have for this?
Eleven eight.
Okay, is that every day?
Tuesday through Saturday, Sundays, Mondays. I prefer, you know, making for neighborhood, you know, peaceful and quiet.
Okay. Do they, did the machines, do they generate a lot of noise?
No, actually, everyone's going to be wearing headphones for the better feeling, for the better, you know, experience.
Okay, so like.
No distractions.
So the headphones provide kind of like the immersive like sound experience?
Yes.
Interesting. Any questions from the board?
Just out of curiosity, like, is there movement involved?
Uh, no.
It's all visual?
It's visual, like I said, three screens, and it's one, one eighty degrees. So basically, you feel like you're sitting and you see the side windows and basically you sit in the real race car.
That sounds very cool.
It is very cool.
Even though I just said that on the record, I promise that I will be unbiased in my decision of whether to grant this PPA or not. Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you so much, thanks, thank you for the time.
All right, while everyone is getting situated, we'll go ahead and have Joe read, oh no, actually, I'm going to read the department of planning's recommendation for this one. Okay. This is the recommendation for calendar number one eighty-seven twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish utilities and services major in an existing expanded renovated transit station building slash platform, Green Line Austin Station, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Chicago Transit Authority, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site dimensional plan exhibit dated August one, twenty twenty-two. Overall plans, phase one through four, building elevation, elevations, phase one through four, and enlarged floor plan, Austin Station House, phase one and three, and the enlarged floor plan, Mason Exit, phase one, dated November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, all prepared by Epstein and Sons International, Inc., the landscape plan dated April eighteen, twenty twenty-three, and planter planting plan, site details and tree planting detail, details dated November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Chen Site Design Studio LLC. Counselor, you may proceed, oh, actually, would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, you can proceed with the short form, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board, my name is Janet Stengel of the law firm of Dastin and Amen. Our offices are at three hundred South Wacker in Chicago. I'm here today representing the applicant, Chicago Transit Authority. CTA seeks approval of a special use permit to allow an expansion of the existing Lake Green Line Austin Transit Station Building and Platform located at three fifty-one North Austin Boulevard. First, I would ask the chair to accept the application package submitted into the record for the proceedings today.
It is accepted.
Thank you. The improvements planned for the Lake Green Line Austin Station will provide full accessibility for commuters. These improvements include new sidewalks, crosswalks, curb ramps, and a new ramp between the street and main station house entrance. Interior renovations will provide modern and ADA accessible upgrades. CTA also plans to install an elevator for access from the platform level to the station house. CTA will also reopen the secondary exit on Mason Avenue for improved egress. These improvements will be attractively designed and all landscaping will be in compliance with the Chicago landscape ordinance. We have three witnesses today, at this time, I would like to call my first witness.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Beth Long is Deputy Program Manager with Transit Capital Partners, who prepared a project zoning report for this application. Beth, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Beth Long, work address is five six seven West Lake Street, Chicago, six zero six seven, zero six seven.
Beth, you previously submitted an affidavit that has been submitted into the record for today's application. If you were to continue to testify today, would your statements be in compliance with the facts contained in that affidavit?
Yes, it will.
Thank you. Steve Misery is the Vice President, Capital Construction of CTA. Steve, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Stephen Misery, Vice President of Capital Construction. Work address is five six seven West Lake Street in Chicago.
Steve, you previously submitted an affidavit that has been introduced into the record. If you were to continue your testimony today, would your testimony be consistent with the facts contained in that affidavit? Thanks. Simon Segelski is a licensed architect for this project. Simon, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Simon Segelski, six hundred West Fulton, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six six one, that's my work address.
Simon, you previously submitted an affidavit into the record. If you were to continue to testify today, would your statements be consistent with the findings in that affidavit?
They would.
Thank you. This project is located in the twenty-ninth ward, and we have previously submitted a letter of support from the Alderman's office, Alderman Talia Pharaoh, and we have received a letter of support from the Village of Oak Park.
Yes, and we do have those in the record.
Great, thank you. We are happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one eighty-eight twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service Tattoo Parlor, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Raven, Inc. Tattoo LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the parking layout dated May eight, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Paul Kolpak, and the floor plan prepared by Raven, Inc. Tattoo dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Her call, Paul Kolpak, attorney for the app, for the applicant. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, the board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. And Counselor Kolpak, you can proceed with the short form.
Good morning. My name is Paul Kolpak. To my right is the applicant, Mr. Presmat Gatafsky, who is the sole member manager of the LLC. As you mentioned, we are today requesting a special use for a tattoo parlor. You did, would you please state your name?
My name is Presmat Gatafsky, address is one three zero nine North Northwest Highway in Park Ridge, Illinois.
And you're a licensed tattoo artist, is that correct?
Yes, I've been tattooing for about fifteen years.
And your intention is to have this a three-seat parlor, is that correct?
It's going to be a five-seat, including me. So it'd be four tattoo stations and one piercing station, if I can get a piercer.
And it depends. If you intend on hiring people or bringing in subcontractors, they will all be licensed, is that correct?
Yes, they're all going to be some licensed subcontractors, they have to have their bloodborne pathogens, they need to make sure they have all their qualifications, at least an apprenticeship somewhere. Good work, if you don't have good work, then you won't fit into what, what I'm looking for.
Just make sure that you speak into the microphone.
And your hours of operation, sir?
It's going to be Monday through Saturday from ten till, twelve AM till ten PM, and then Sunday is going to be twelve AM till eight PM.
And you did submit a floor plan back in, in January of this year, and I signed on your behalf verifying that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I prepared an affidavit. And if you were called on to testify further, you testified in that, in substantial compliance to that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Have no further questions. Mr. Musawir?
Sir?
Would you kindly state your name?
Kareem Musawir.
Mr. Musawir, you were engaged to check out this property, make sure it complies with the standards and special use of the city of Chicago, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you did, in fact, investigate the property?
I did.
And, and the surrounding area?
Yes, sir.
And you prepared an affidavit to that effect, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if asked to testify, you testified substantial compliance to that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
And that is in support of this special use application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No further questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Case, one eighty-nine twenty-four S, seventeen fifty North Kingsbury.
All right, while everyone's getting situated, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one eighty-nine twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a sports and recreation participant physical fitness center facility on the first floor within an existing two-story commercial building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Vision Quest LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May third, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Martz and Valentine Architects LLC. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. O'Brien's expertise, and you can proceed with the short form, counselor.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Leach, and I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Acreman LLP, located at seventy-one South Wacker Drive. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the applicant, Vision Quest LLC, in connection with the application seeking a proposed special use to establish a physical fitness center at the property located at seventeen fifty North Kingsbury Street, which is located within the M three dash three Heavy Industry District. It should be noted that this existing building was previously occupied by a physical fitness operator. Before getting into the details of this application, I'd like to introduce you to the witnesses for the case today. Dave Noda, the owner, owner and Vice President of the applicant, Vision Quest LLC, and Terrence O'Brien, our expert appraiser and witness. The subject site is located at thirty, in the thirty-second ward on Kingsbury Street, just south of the intersection with Wisconsin Street. The subject site is seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet in size and is improved with the subject, eight thousand square foot, two-story industrial commercial building, and, and a name. two-story industrial commercial building and a neighboring 20,000-square-foot one-story masonry industry industrial commercial building that is unrelated to the application. The applicant seeks to establish the physical fitness center on the first floor of the existing vacant building that has been vacant since December 31 of 2022. Pursuant to our discussions and review of the proposed special use application, the Department of Planning and Development, the applicant has updated the site and floor plans dated May 3, 2024, with additional detailed information as requested by DPD. Of note, I wanted to point out to the board that the 16 parking spaces on the subject site are shared with the adjacent building, but 10 of the spaces are designated for the subject building, the two-story that is subject to this case, and that the required parking for the proposed use is five parking spaces. I would ask to submit the updated plans to the board and that they be part of the made part of the record today.
Okay.
The applicant has informed Alderman Wagaspack's office and the surrounding property owners of the proposed special use, and we are not aware of any objections of the proposed use, and we had asked for your seek, we seek your favorable approval. With that, I'll move to the witnesses. Mr. Noda, would you please state your name for the record?
Dave Noda.
And Mr. Noda, you have prepared an affidavit and submitted it with the application of this case, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you testified today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Brien, would you please state your name for the record?
Terrence O'Brien, O-P-A-S-F-R-I-E-N.
Mr. O'Brien, you have prepared a written report describing how the proposed special use complies with all the criteria for approval today, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And could you please summarize your report for the board?
Well, the property is located in the near north side, and it's a zone manufacturing M3, which is the most intensive industrial district within the city of Chicago. The subject itself is a two-story structure. The portion that will be utilized by the applicant is the first floor, and it contains approximately 2,600 square feet. There will be an adjoining parking lot where there'll be at least five spaces designated for the use. Its hours of operation are relatively less intense than many of the commercial industrial uses in the area. That is, the hours are 6 a.m. to 6 p.m., except for Saturdays and Sundays, where they're 7 a.m. to approximately 1 p.m. The clients will probably never exceed 13 at anyone's time in the building, and also there'll be two full-time employees.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions that we have. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Just one question for the applicant. I think from looking at the the findings effect, is this just a relocation of a business that's already been existing for, I wrote down, the last 19 years?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I'm familiar with them.
We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Two cases. 19224Z, 19324Z, 6331 West Waverly.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Mr. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Mr. Chairman, Maria is technically the title holder to the property. She bought it with her husband Alberto in 2017, and their three children live there. Her oldest son, she English is not her first language, and her oldest son has really been the one who dealt with the architects and the contractors and everybody. And both of them have signed an identical witness statement, so I was wondering if you would let him testify to the bulk of what happened.
Yeah, I will let you have him testify to his affidavit, and we can move to the next one.
Oh, very well, okay. So tell the board who you are.
I'm Rodrigo Montes, address is 6331 West Waverly Avenue.
And you have lived there with your mom since 2017, is that right?
Yes.
And your mom and your dad bought this house as is and were surprised in 2020 when they got a notice from the city that there were some problems, and they needed some variant, to correct those problems, they needed some variances.
Is that right? That's correct.
And not only are you, you're not just, you're actually correcting, you're bringing the roof of the garage down, and you're getting rid of a tiki bar, and you're bringing the whole place into compliance, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and if you and I worked out an affidavit addressing all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Will you tell us who you are?
I'm Maria Montes, 6331 West Waverly.
And you signed an affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were going to keep testifying, you testify same as that affidavit, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And will you tell us who you are, sir?
I'm Marco Vides, I work at Senior Architects. Hello, I'm Marco Vides, I work at Senior Architects.
You are the the managing person for this file at Furman Architects, is that right?
Correct.
And your firm has developed plans that would bring the property fully into compliance, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to, and you and I worked on an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
That's correct.
That's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we take this next case, I move that we just take a short five-minute recess. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are in recess for five minutes. Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are back. We are on calendar number 19524Z. Would both the applicant's witnesses and the objector please raise your right hand? Sir, if you could raise your right hand?
Sir.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand? That's okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Bridget Brantley Ball.
And who is the gentleman with you?
My husband, Alvin Ball Jr.
And you are the owners of this property, is that right?
Yes.
And when did you, when did you purchase it?
January of 2016.
And in January 2016, you had a lawyer, a architect, I'm sorry, a lawyer, an inspector, and a realtor, all of whom helped advise you on the purchase of the house, is that right?
Yes.
And this basically was your dream house that you found and put your life savings into it, is that right?
Yes.
And so every, everything you knew about it appeared to be fine, and all your advisors told you it was, there were no problems with it, is that right?
That's correct.
And you lived there for six years before you were told that there was a problem, is that right?
Correct.
And incidentally, when you purchased it, I'll show you applicant's exhibit number one, that the first page is your house, is that right?
That's correct.
But there were three other houses on the block, the next three pages, that look almost identical, that had the same addition, is that right?
Yes.
And again, so it looked like this one fit right into the neighborhood, and again, it appeared nothing was wrong with it, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, so after six years, you got into a dispute with your neighbor about a fence that was on your property, is that right?
Correct.
And I'll show you exhibit number two, and this board has nothing to do with this dispute, but just to understand how this came about. Exhibit number two shows the fence itself, and then the property line mark that the surveyors do in the alley, and showing that the fence is about 10.8 inches, almost a foot on your property, is that right?
Well, from the survey, it's a little bit more, but yes.
Okay, and you don't know how long that fence had been there?
No.
But when you asked your neighbor to move it off, you ended up in a lawsuit with him, is that right?
Correct.
And he's trying to get your, your foot or so by adverse possession.
Correct.
But you've continued to pay the taxes on it, is that right?
Correct.
And so anyway, he then told the city, he had lived there when this addition was being made by the prior owner, is that right?
Correct.
But you, you did, you were not there, you knew nothing about any permitting problems or variances or anything, is that right? So, but then he told the city that it had been built without a permit, is that right?
Correct.
And then, so then you got a citation to go to building court, is that right?
That's correct.
And you had purchased this from a investor, and you went to him and said, you know, I've been defrauded, I didn't know there were all these problems with this, and he stepped up to the plate, and he's paying for the, most of the expenses to make this correct, right?
Right, correct.
And however, you're still going to be greatly inconvenienced because, because of there might be structural issues, and the city wants to open up the walls and the ceilings, but to make sure it's structurally sound, you have to move out, and you have to have alternative housing for a period, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you're here today, you've hired an architectural firm, and they have submitted plans that would bring it into compliance, that's your understanding, and he'll testify to that, is that right?
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, on your block, I'll show you, the, all of the buildings have the gangway on the south side, is that right?
Yes.
And so, and they're closer to the lot line on the north side, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so exhibit number three is a true and accurate picture of the gangway between you and the objector, is that right?
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, we see his fence at the back of it, is that right?
That is correct.
But like the other picture, about a foot of that is really on your property, is that right? And if we look at the second page, it shows that the south side, it's 4.12 feet from your building to your property line, is that right?
Correct.
And if we look at the last page, it actually shows that his property is, that his building is 2.7 feet further south off of his property line, is that right?
Yes.
So the, there's a good six feet, six to someplace between six and seven feet between your two properties, is that right? And you're here to try to bring everything into compliance, and you're trying to do everything that you can to bring it into compliance, is that right?
Correct.
And you've talked to the neighbor on the other side, the south side?
Yes.
I mean, sorry, excuse me, the north side?
Yes.
And what was her position?
Ms. Mary is a wonderful woman. She does not care, nothing is affecting her. We actually help her out. She's like an adoptive senior for me. We take care of her lawn and her snow and do what we can to help her.
So she has no objection?
No.
And you also talked to the Alderman?
Yes.
And what was his position?
I went to his office and spoke to him, explained to me what the process was and that he wasn't on this board, and then I saw him again, and he said he drove by trying to look at the fences and all of that, and then he hugged me and told me he was sorry I was going through this.
Okay, so you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant the variances you need to bring this property into compliance, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
Yeah.
The gentleman, to your right, will you tell us who you are, sir?
My name is Alvin Ball Jr.
And Mr. Ball, is there anything you'd like to add to your wife's testimony?
Well, everything she said was consistent.
Well, everything she said was consistent.
Okay.
You know, truthful and accurate.
Okay. And you also worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
The gentleman to his right, will you tell us who you are, please?
Marco Vides from Zeng Architects.
And you're the managing, you're, you're the managing, the project manager for this file in your firm, is that right?
That's correct.
And if the board sees fit to grant this variance, the property would come into full compliance, is that right?
That's correct.
And the, if we didn't have all these other issues, the case is really just a matter of, of building a, a wall, continuing a wall to the second floor on the north side of the building, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And, and this building is about, the assessor says 98 years old, is that right?
That's correct.
So it, that wall that's in the side yard on the north side is, was there before the zoning code even existed, is that right?
That's correct.
So that's a normal hardship that this board deals with all the time, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And in your opinion, given the other buildings on the block, will this in any way have, will it fit into the character of the neighborhood?
I guess it would.
And given the distance between this house and the objector's house, in your opinion, will it have any negative impact on the air or light or any other negative impact on the objector's house?
Oh, no.
That's our case in chief.
All right, let's turn to the objector. Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good afternoon, board. My name is Bernard Spinks. I reside at 9125 South Way Street.
Okay. And tell us why you are here in objection.
Yes, I'm here to object. First of all, let me respond to their representation. He stated that I had exposed some city violations or whatever the case might be in the context of the existing civil case that's occurring at this time, that's in the discovery phase. I never exposed anything. I'm a defendant in this case. I'm here today defending myself and my wife, she's here with me. They're asking for a setback of one point, I'm sorry, excuse me, that will be 4.12 feet, I assume that is, on the south side, that setback. I also have pictures of the, our space that is consistent with what they have there on the page. If you do a setback of 4.12 feet, that cuts into our landscape, it denies me access to the north side of the building. And I'm a person of disability, I have to have my access. And also, the fence that was in caution is permitted, and it would cut into that fence. And coincidentally, this 4.12 feet that they're asking is the same amount of feet that they're suing us for in this civil case. Case number 2023C802151, in the Circuit Court of Cook County, as I stated, it's in the discovery phase. Again, I had nothing to do with their misfortune. My hearts go out to them because they apparently had an experience that no one wants to encounter, and they're victim of whatever the case might be when they purchased their property. However, they did purchase their property in 2015. This is the, this is the plot of the 2015 versus the 2022 survey. So there's a conflict there with the two surveys. One is the one that they submitted to the court, what they had done, and that's when they submitted the lawsuit against us. As far as us having a conversation, I did listen to their concerns, and I felt like everything was irrational, the way that this 2022 survey is going on an angle. So therefore, they pursued this matter in court, where we are with that civil case. But as far as anything to do with violations, anything of that nature, that has no complex or complicit with me and my wife. Only thing, we are defendants in this case, and we're here today to oppose of this 4.12 feet setback. That 4.12 feet setback cuts into our landscape, cuts, denies me the access to the north side of our home, cuts into our fence, which is permitted. And it has been permitted because the fence that you see in the picture is a replacement fence. When we purchased our property in 2000, it was an existing fence, and that's what you see on the survey. I even brought a copy of our survey from 2000. So in our defense, we're just here defending ourselves, and we oppose of that 4.12 feet because that is the same thing, what they call double dipping, I would say in the court of law, with the civil case and also with the zoning. So I apologize to what their misfortunes are, but as far as that setback that they're seeking, we totally oppose of that. That's the reason we're here to defend ourselves on that.
Do you have any questions for any of the applicant's witnesses before we go back to them for rebuttal and closing?
No, pretty much, I'm here again to defend myself, me and my wife, and ourselves and the opposers that said that.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go back to Counselor Moore for a brief rebuttal and closing.
Very brief. The architect, would you tell us, the variance we're seeking is on the north side of the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're seeking no relief on the south side of the property, is that correct?
That's, yeah, those states are saying.
And the, and then, as always, if you're getting it on one side, you need the combined, is that right?
That's correct.
So that may be where the ambiguity is, but we're not seeking any relief on his side, is that right?
That's correct.
And then, the, your understanding that, unfortunately, you're having this litigation with your neighbor, is that right?
Correct.
And your understanding is that his claim is for adverse possession of a foot of your property, is that right?
Yes.
And, but that has nothing to do with trying to bring your property into compliance otherwise, is that right?
No.
That's all I have.
Are there any questions from the board?
Okay, just to clarify, because it does seem like there's some misunderstanding between the two homeowners. The lot line, your home, the applicant's home, is 4.12 feet from the existing lot line?
That's right.
Okay. And the fence is somehow not in the right place, is that correct? So this really has nothing to do with anything other than the fence being on one person's property or the other? You're not changing anything in regards to the lot line, is that understood?
Yes.
But it does not seem to be understood.
Well, that's because the, the neighbor here is, is, I think, in the, in the circuit court matters, trying to adversely possess a portion of that, of that with the, with the fence. And that's what that action is about. Is that, is that right?
That's, that is right, that's my understanding. I'm, I'm not the lawyer on that.
Right. But that issue is not before us. We can't decide the adversity.
The only issue before you is on the north side, following the same wall up that's been there since 98 years ago.
What year was this second-story addition constructed?
Sometime before.
It was, had to be done sometime in either 2014, 2014 or 2015. We saw the house. We saw the house in this, in late November, closed in the house, that was November of 2016, we closed on the house in January, on January, I believe it was January 16th, not 100% sure on that date of the 16th, but in 2016, and then moved right, right in.
Well, you saw it in 2016?
I saw it in 2015.
At the end of 15?
End of 15, a purchase, the beginning of 2016.
And there have been no changes to the footprint of either the house or the garage?
No.
And there's no intention to change it?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you, everyone, for your time. All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, once you're done shutting your phone off, you can proceed with the short form.
My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Sagit Halpern.
And who's the gentleman to your right?
That is my husband, Val Bernstein.
And where do both of you live?
We live at 1456 West Kyler Street in Chicago.
Who do you live there with?
Our three children.
And how long have you lived there?
Since July of 2019.
And did you find with your three children that the staircase leading to the garage roof deck was rotting?
Correct.
And therefore dangerous?
Correct.
And so, you hired Mr. Ryan here to get plans and permit to replace it, is that right?
Correct.
And basically, you're going to replace the stairs anyway with a, a iron or a material that will not rot, is that right?
Correct.
But you're putting everything where it currently is?
Correct.
You're not changing any?
No.
Okay. And when you're done, it'll be fully, if the board sees fit to grant the variance, it'll be fully compliant, is that right?
Correct.
And you didn't know this, but apparently sometime since that was built, the city has required open space, and if you can't comply with that, that's your second variance, is that right?
Yes.
And so, you and I worked out an affidavit whereby you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. If you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
Gentlemen to your right, will you tell us who you are?
My name is Val Bernstein, I live at the same address.
And anything you want to add to your wife's testimony? And you also worked out an affidavit that addressed all the criteria, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The gentleman at the end, will you tell us who you are?
Mike Ryan.
And the, you designed plans that would bring this into full compliance, is that right?
Well, pending the variation.
I'm sorry, assuming if, I shouldn't assume. If the board sees that, it would bring it into compliance at that rate?
Correct.
And can you tell the board briefly what your difficulties in designing this existing condition was?
Yes, we did seek record drawings through Freedom of Information Act. We were unable to get any record documents, so we don't know what was originally permitted, but the existing building is well within the required rear yard setback, and that's the first and most primary challenge. And because it's so far into the rear yard setback, there is very limited rear yard open space, it's non-compliant, there's not even enough space to build the stairs parallel and abutting the garage, and the existing stairs stack over stairs down to the basement. So we're really hemmed in with the existing layout that's there, and just seeking to bring it into compliance to make safe improvements to the home.
And if, you and I worked out an affidavit, if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with your affidavit that's on file, is that right?
Yes.
That's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go back to the regular order. Case number 19624S, there's a question in West Bama.
Thank you. But I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 19624S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to expand a ground floor, middle dwelling unit to the front of the building in an existing three-story, five-dwelling unit building to be deconverted to a four-dwelling unit building by removing the illegal dwelling unit from the attic, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May 17, 2024, prepared by Luis A. Martinez, architect. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board has already recognized Mr. O'Brien's expertise, and you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir. For the record, my name is Nick Fatikas. I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of San Banks, located at 221 North LaSalle Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, DJMEGJV1LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at 3718 West Belmont Avenue. The subject lot measures 28 feet wide by 131 feet deep, and it's improved with a three-story building containing four legal units and an unpermitted fifth unit. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the building's first floor and combine the middle unit with an unpermitted front unit. We're also removing, per the recommendation, the, what we believe is a sixth unit that was in the attic, that was also never permitted. Those additional units, we believe, were installed by a prior owner prior to my client's purchase of the property. In order to permit the expansion, or really the reconfiguration of the four legal units, we are seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B3-2 zoning district. And again, it's important to note that the footprint amassing of the existing multi-unit building and the four unit total will remain code compliant. With that, I have three witnesses on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Donald Hajarde, our project architect, Luis Martinez, and our MAA designated appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. And Donald, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Donald Hajarde, 3436 North Central Park Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60618.
And you are one of the managers of the applicant, DJMEGJV1LLC?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're attempting to seek a permit to reconfigure the existing four units, legal four units, and remove the unpermitted units of the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
And part of that is to seek a special use because there are residential uses below the first, or below the second floor of the existing structure, is that right?
That's correct.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Chairman, this is a special use. I have Mr. Martinez present if you have questions about the building or the architecture, but I could probably just skip to Mr. O'Brien. Terry, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Terrence O'Brien, 2574 Fairford, Northbrook, Illinois.
And you, again, are an MAA appraiser?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the subject property at 3718 West Belmont?
Yes, I am.
And your, scope of your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use met the special use approval criteria set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct.
And based on your inspection, it's your opinion that the proposed expansion of an existing residential use below the building's second floor is an appropriate and compatible use at the subject site, is that right?
In my professional opinion, it is, and also, I believe, meets all the criteria set forth in the ordinance. I'd also like to point out that in the three-block stretch, 36, 37, 38, 100 block of West Belmont, there's 19 structures that utilize the ground floor for residential purposes. In that same stretch, there's 12 vacant retail spaces. Also, in recent time, in that same stretch, the board has granted special uses for residential purposes on three different occasions.
Thank you, Terry. And again, you did prepare a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
That is correct, yes.
And it's your understanding I submitted a copy of that written report to the board?
That's correct, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in the report.
That is correct also.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
We do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fatikas, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir. Again, Nick Fatikas, for the record, I'm here on behalf of the applicant 810 Alt Belt LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at 810 West Elkelt Street. The subject site consists of a single lot measuring 25 feet wide by 109.5 feet deep. The property is improved with a two-story residential building containing two permitted units and an unpermitted garden unit. Those building conditions existed when the applicant purchased the property back in 2022. The applicant is now in the process of bringing the garden unit into compliance with the permit. In order to do that, we're seeking a variation to reduce the minimum lottery requirement from 3,000 square feet to 2,729.55 square feet. The height, footprint, and massing of the existing two-story building will otherwise remain without change. I have two witnesses available to testify, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mike Ichbal, and our project architect, Mr. George Fajardo. And Mike, can you, speaking to the, Mike, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mike Ichbal, my address is 4311 West Blue Drive, Northbrook, Illinois 60062.
And Mike, you are the manager of the applicant 810 Alt Belt LLC?
Yes.
And again, you're trying to bring an existing garden unit into full compliance with the zoning ordinance, is that right? And in, and in order to do that, we're seeking a variation because of the substandard lot depth dimension, is that right?
That's correct.
And provided the board grants the relief, you hope to be able to continue to rent the apartment on the open market?
Yes.
And you've provided the board with a summary of your projected costs and return, is that right?
Yes.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fajardo, can you take the microphone back? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
George Fajardo, 796 Oak Hill Road in Barrington, Illinois.
And George, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, and you've previously testified in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yes, I am.
And your firm developed the plans required to permit the existing garden unit?
Yes, we did.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard lot depth dimension of 109.5 feet creates the practical difficulty or particular hardship the requested variation would overcome, is that right?
Yes.
And again, except for the minimum lottery issue, the height, massing, and footprint of the building will all comply with the underlying RT4 zoning district, is that right?
Right.
George, can you, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
While everyone is getting situated, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 19824S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the expansion of the body art service tattoo into the second floor of the existing two-story building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Taylor Street Tattoo LLC. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board has already recognized Mr. O'Brien's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
I appreciate it. Thank you again, Chairman, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Taylor Street Tattoo LLC. The applicant currently operates a tattoo and body art studio on the ground floor of the existing two-story mixed-use building at 1150 West Taylor Street. The studio was actually established back in 2004 after it received approvals from this board for the use. After 20 years of operating, the applicant is proposing to expand its tattoo and body art studio into the building's second floor. The expansion would essentially convert an existing residential unit into an extension of the studio space. In order to do that, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B3-2 zoning district. I actually have two witnesses planning to testify, the president of the applicant entity, Mr. Keith Underwood, and our appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. And with that, I can call my first witness.
Go ahead.
Keith, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Keith Underwood, 1150 West Taylor Street, Chicago, Illinois 60607.
And again, you're the president managing member of the applicant, Taylor Street Tattoo LLC?
I am.
And since 2004, you've operated a tattoo and body art studio on the ground floor of the existing building at 1150 West Taylor Street, right?
Correct.
And you're now proposing to expand the studio into the building's second floor?
Correct.
And just for a little bit of background, the second floor contains approximately 985 square feet of floor area?
Correct.
And that'll actually translate to about four workstations and additional back of the house and storage space, right?
Yes, sir.
And the ranges of services that you'll continue to provide are the permanent tattooing and body piercing?
Correct.
And those services will be provided on both floors, is that right?
Correct.
And Chairman, I just wanted to point for the record, the original approval in 2004 was for, it was under a different type of license, was for body piercing and for tattooing. The application today is under one kind of umbrella. So I just want to make sure that's clear for the record, and it may be noted for, in the resolution, should we be approved, that it does allow for tattooing and body piercing. Thank you. And again, you personally have over 30 years of experience?
Yep.
And in anticipation of today's hearing, you were able to circulate a petition and obtain about 75 signatures in support?
Oh, yeah.
And we're really proud of that because in 2004, there were about 75 people and news cameras here objecting to this.
It was a lot of fun.
So.
Times changed, don't they?
Yeah, no, no, they love us now.
So Keith, and in terms of operations, the studio will continue to operate seven days a week between 12:00 PM and 10:00 PM, again, each day.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it did.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to jump to it, the scope of your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use complied with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code?
That is correct, yes.
And part of your evaluation was to physically inspect the subject property in the surrounding area?
That is correct also.
And based on that inspection, you believe that all of the approval criteria are met for the proposed use expansion?
In my opinion, all the criteria is are met for the proposed special use. And I also emphasize the fact that the current use exists there today, it's merely an expansion.
And Terry, you did prepare a written report detailing your findings and conclusions in this case?
I did, yes.
And you did submit, or it's your understanding that I submitted a copy of that report to the board?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in the written report?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Sure, and I see that we've got Mr. Valenziano, could you state your name and role, please?
Steve Valenziano, I'm the Director of Development for Alderman Conway in the 34th Ward.
And what brings you here today?
I just wanted to express the Alderman's strong support for this small, local, and successful business, and we look forward to seeing its continued success for another 20 years.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Congratulations on the expansion, we'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak, I'm an attorney, represent the applicant, and I have with me today seated beside me Conrad Sinkovich on behalf of the applicant, and next to him, Tom Budzik, the project architect. Subject property is a vacant lot, vacant lot in our fourth district. Our fourth district allows three-unit residential buildings. However, this particular lot is a little bit small and a little bit short on the required minimum lot area. And we're here seeking a variation. Unique circumstances, the lot is narrow, only 24 feet wide. Lot is also short, only 124 feet deep, substandard lot.
The foot less on both the width and the depth is, if you had a 125 by 25, would this be as of right?
Exactly, if it was 25 feet wide, it would be as of right, if it was 125 deep, it would be as of right. We're only 23 feet short, we have 99% of the required lot area.
Got it.
And his proposal is a three-unit residential building, proposes a condo building, very important to him to get three units. With that, my first witness, Conrad, would you state your name and your business address?
Conrad Sinkowitz, business address is 4234 North Hamlin Avenue, Chicago 60618.
Conrad, true that you are the manager member of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
And you're, you gotta speak into that microphone because they're, they're taking the tape. Also, truly, your LLC has a contract to purchase the subject property?
That's correct.
And also, your plan is to do a three-unit residential building?
Correct.
And you plan to do a condo building?
Yes.
So three units are especially important to you for the success of the project.
Exactly.
Is it true that you had signed, previously signed, an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
That's correct.
And if I would continue to quiz you, would your answers be the same as contained in the affidavit?
Yes.
That's all I have. Conrad, Tom Budzik, Tom, state your name, business address?
Thomas Budzik, Thomas Architects, 2800 South River Road, Des Plaines, Illinois 60016.
And Tom, you are the project architect?
Yes, correct.
And Tom, is that correct, this lot is only 24 feet wide?
Yes, correct.
And also, only 124 deep?
Yes.
And as the chairman had pointed out, either way, if it was a normal standard lot, we would have enough square footage.
Correct, the standard lot would allow for three units.
But because of small lot, we need the variation, and we do have about 99% of the required lot area.
Yes, correct.
Tom, true, you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be the same and consistent with the affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. I got one more case, wait for me, okay? No, back there though.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicant. I have with me today seated next to me is Wendy Nguyen. Next to her, her husband, John Nguyen. Wendy is the manager member of the LLC, John works with Wendy in operations, operating the current restaurant. And next to John, we've got Sam Marterino in case we need some architectural help. So on this one, the applicant LLC is looking for a variation so that they could get a PPA to add some karaoke music. Applicant owns the property, currently operate a restaurant. Expensive building to maintain, they need more customers so they could afford the expenses, especially the real estate taxes.
They need Commissioner Esposito there singing Sinatra is what they need.
Another restaurant, similar restaurant in the area had some success introducing karaoke music, which was popular with the customers to bring people into the into the establishment, and they'd like to, like to try the same thing. Little twist is, if you're within 125 of the residential district, you need the variation. The residential district that is close is the one across the alley to the north. We had a little twist on this one, when we started, it was only a B1 zoning district. The city wanted a B3 zoning district in order to apply. So at the Alderman's request, we met a couple times with the local community group and talked to the Alderman, and she was nice enough to support a zoning change with the city council passed. So we've got the B3 that enabled us to file this. And I would say, at that time, we met with the Hollywood North Park Community Association, matter of fact, two meetings, to explain the project, and they were nice enough to give us a letter of support, to give the Alderman a letter of support, and she's written a couple of letters.
We've got those in the file. Commissioner Toya lives on, communication is key.
With that, my first witness, Wendy Nguyen. Wendy, speaking to that microphone, state your name and your business address?
My name is Wendy Nguyen, and address is 3220 West Redmond Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60659.
And Wendy, is it true you are both the manager and member of the LLC?
Yes.
And your LLC owns the property?
Yes.
And you currently operate a restaurant in the existing building?
Yes.
And you would like to add karaoke music for the benefit of your customers?
Yes.
Wendy, is it true that previously you had signed an affidavit?
Yes.
For this case?
Yes.
And if I would continue to ask your questions, is it true your answers would be the same and consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have of Wendy. I've got her husband, John, here just in case there are operational questions, but I think Wendy's affidavit says it all.
Yeah.
And I've got actually Sam Marterino just in case there was some architectural question, but I don't think relevant with the criteria.
Right.
So other than that, I would point out, as Wendy states in her affidavit, the existing building, for the existing restaurant business, the customers leave and enter the front door on Bryn Mawr. Bryn Mawr is a commercial street, a street full of storefronts, most storefronts close at 5:00 PM, so not open at nighttime, so this use actually fits in well on the Bryn Mawr Avenue and middle of the block, far removed from the residential district.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Kate Duncan, I'm an attorney with offices at 300 North LaSalle. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the applicant Katie Lambert in connection with her application for variations for the property located at 2721 North Albany Avenue. Present this morning with me is Katie Lambert, Ms. Lambert and her husband own the property, and Ms. Lambert is also a licensed architect in the state of Illinois and has acted as her own architect for this project. The Lamberts are seeking to construct a very small addition to the back of their existing single-family home, they've lived in the home for approximately 13 years. Property is zoned RS3, the existing home is a traditional workers cottage that dates back to the late 19th century. The existing home has two bedrooms and one bathroom, the Lamberts have two children, so they'd like to add a bedroom and a bathroom to the home. The addition will also allow for a new modern kitchen with slightly more living space for the family and a new outdoor deck. The home has an existing bonus room on the back that will be demolished, but the Lamberts would like to reuse the existing north foundation wall of the bonus room for the addition. So this will keep the line of the home consistent and will also allow them to realize a little bit of cost savings in order to be able to do the addition. The foundation wall currently sits in a non-conforming position at 0.75 feet from the north property boundary. Accordingly, in order to keep the foundation wall and extend it just slightly, a variation is needed to reduce the north setback from two feet to 0.75 feet and to reduce the total combined setbacks from five feet to 4.33 feet. So the Lamberts will not be touching the front half of the house, and all improvements will be only in the rear. They're seeking to preserve the They're seeking to preserve the historic, the history and integrity of the historic home and the proposed addition is just a modest addition. And it does not encroach into the required rear yard either. It's just the side, the side setback.
Am I correct that you reached out to your neighbors too and they had no objection? Yeah.
Okay, so so Mr. Chairman, would you, you said to
I think you can just have her swear to her affidavit.
Ms. Lambert, have you submitted an affidavit along with the findings of fact to this board?
Yes.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with your affidavit and the findings of fact?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendation for calendar number 20324S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed three lane automated bank teller drive through facility to serve a proposed Chase Bank, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant JP Morgan Chase and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May 14, 2024, prepared by the architects partnership. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Porstein from the law offices of Neil and Leroy here on behalf of Chase Bank. This is a pretty straightforward case, although it took us a long time to get here. Just by way of background, there is a drive through facility. It's been here since 2004. This board approved that back then. But that bank went out of business a couple of years ago, I think. Okay, so it merged and it moved out of this location and this was vacant for unfortunately just over the 18 month period, which would have would have allowed us to continue the use. But because of the vacancy, we had to start from scratch, right? Come back. But the other complication here was that this location is on a pedestrian street. You're not allowed to have drive throughs on a pedestrian street. So we had to go and with the help of the the alderman and the community, we have temporarily removed the pedestrian street designation. That again was done by the alderman in in an effort, obviously, to get the drive throughs back up and running here. We're going to put that designation back once this is up and running. But so we took care of that. That's all been adopted by council and now here before you with the ability to move forward with the drive through. And we've given you the support letter from the alderman. Obviously, he's been very involved in this. No objections from any neighbors that we're aware of. So with that, I guess we can call our witnesses.
And have them swear to their affidavits, yes.
Great. So we'll start at the end. Jason, would you want to state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jason Jarrett with Oak rent Kissel Associates. I'm a certified planner and our offices are at 141 West Jackson in Chicago.
And the board recognizes Mr. Jarrett's expertise.
Terrific. Jason, you were involved in preparing a land use planning study for this project. In addition, an affidavit that we submitted as part of our findings of fact. And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the conclusions and findings of that affidavit and your report?
It would.
Great. Well, we can move on to Tim. State your name and address for the record.
Timothy Messick, located at 200 South Michigan Avenue, Suite 1020 in Chicago, Illinois.
And Tim, your firm also prepared an affidavit and provided findings and conclusions in connection with this project. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit and the findings?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Our last witnesses are representative from Chase Bank, John Chrisoff. John, can you state your name and address for the record?
Jonathan Chrisoff, Market Director of Real Estate for JP Morgan Chase Bank, 10 South Dearborn, 25th floor, Chicago, Illinois.
And thank you, John. And also the bank also prepared a separate affidavit and reviewed the conclusions and findings that we prepared in connection with our findings of fact. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit and those conclusions and findings?
It would.
Great. We have nothing further.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Samantha Nunez. I'm an attorney with Crook Fair Trial Duarte and Barris. I'm here on behalf of applicant owner Ashreeh Methemi. And with me today are applicant owner Ashreeh Metmehi. He's the owner applicant. Also with us today is George Fajardo. He's the architect. And we have Gerald Garcia, who is the zoning consultant.
All right, you can have your witnesses swear to their affidavits.
Great. Mr. Medmity, we prepared an affidavit testifying to the conclusions and findings of fact.
Yes.
And if I were to continue to ask you questions, would your answers be consistent with those findings?
Yes.
And Mr. Fajardo, we also prepared an affidavit testifying testifying to the conclusions and findings of fact.
Yes.
And if I were to continue to ask you questions, would you, would your answers be consistent with the affidavit?
Yes.
The subject property is an existing one and two story business building, which is seeking a variation to reduce the required rear setback for floors containing residential dwelling units from 30 feet to a tenth of a foot in order to allow the construction of a rear second upper story addition, which will follow the existing footprint of the walls below. The addition will contain the fifth dwelling unit. The subject property is a substandard lot with a lot depth of only 90 feet, which causes a hardship due to being 35 feet shorter than the typical city of Chicago lot depth of 125 feet. Had the lot been 35 feet longer, the variation would not be required. The subject property was granted a type one zoning amendment, application number 21013T1 on May 2022 to a B3-3 community shopping district, which was needed to meet the minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirement for five dwelling units. The rear second story addition and a parking reduction from five spaces to four due to its close proximity to the CTA Blue Line and Transit Station. The property falls within the transit served location. With the proposed variation, the applicant seeks to achieve the highest and best use of the property and provide more housing opportunities near transit. That concludes our case in chief and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Good morning again. For the record, my name is Aknas Pleka. I'm an attorney with law offices of Jaffe and Berlin LLC. And I'm here to represent Brissani LLC Series C, which is the owner of the property and the applicant in these variations. And just a very short overview, this redevelopment project began 2021 when the city council rezoned this property specifically for this project, a four story residential building with eight dwelling units and eight parking spaces. Four of those parking spaces are interior in the basement and they are accessed by a ramp sloping down and four outdoor parking spaces line along the rear property line. On about May 23, 2022, this honorable zoning board of appeals, I'm sure Commissioner Toya still remembers it. You guys actually granted a resolution in your wisdom deciding that this is a unique circumstance for this lot. It's a short lot, only 108 feet deep. So the resolution granted allowed reduced rear setback for the building itself. And today we are back before you for variation for the rear setbacks to allow a carport structure for those four outdoor parking spaces. And the hardships for this particular case stem from the ambiguities of the zoning code. Per section 17-0309, there are multiple features which are allowed to be located within the rear setback such as fully enclosed garage, unenclosed parking spaces in residential districts, accessory structures, which are accessory to principal buildings, porches, balconies open at least on three sides. However, none of those items are listed as specifically as a carport. So even though we are partially enclosing parking, even though we are definitely an accessory structure, unfortunately, because it's not specifically listed, this variation is triggered. And with that, I would like to call Helen as my first witness. Helen, please state your name and address for the record.
53 South Archer Avenue, Suite 1C.
Thank you. And you are the project architect?
Yes.
You've surveyed the property, you've surveyed the block, you are very familiar with this zoning lot and with the subject lot.
Yes.
And the ordinance provides that enclosed parking spaces such as garages or enclosed structures are allowed to be located within the rear setback.
Yes.
And the ordinance also provides that accessory structures are allowed to be located within the rear setback.
Yes.
And the proposed carport is both accessory structure and encloses at least partially encloses parking area, correct?
Correct.
So we are hoping that this variation will address those inconsistencies in the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And you've signed an affidavit which contain your statements addressing every criteria for the variations today?
I did, yes.
And we submitted that affidavit?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, Helen. Sephar, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sephar Sani. My address is 1000 Pine Tree Lane, Winnetka, Illinois 60093.
And you are the member and manager of the Brissani LLC, the owner of the property?
I am.
And since you started marketing the dwelling units, we've been marketing them for over six months. You discovered that ready buyers actually consider enclosed parking spaces as absolutely necessary amenities. So up to today, we were not able to sell any of those units. Is that true?
That's true.
So without those variations, which would allow the carport, you would not be able to make any reasonable return at this point, three years into making on this project. Is that true?
That's true.
And we submitted your affidavit, which contain your statements addressing all the criteria, correct?
Correct.
And if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with your statements in that affidavit?
Yes.
So that is all that I have. Open for questioning.
Just kind of kind of a curious question. Is there a reason you didn't go for a full on garage?
Yes. I mean, I can answer Helen. So it's because the lot, it's not only substandard, but it's not wide enough. Helen had to come up with a very creative design where we have sloping down to access those four parking spaces. So because we have to keep those slopes down, the rear of the property line is sort of the slope, the parking, the outdoor parking space, the slope, the outdoor parking space. So it's just not possible to have a fully enclosed garage.
Got it. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. That was the last case of the morning session. So I move that we convene in a closed session pursuant to section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
...